Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Traditional territory of the Hoarestni, Huron and Wendat. Please all rise for the singing of our national anthem to be followed by a moment of personal reflection.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
A revised agenda was published on Monday. The following items were included. We've added a proclamation for Black History Month. We have a delegation added and published for Black History Month. We have minutes that were added for Committee of Council. Correspondence was added from Regional Council Maderos. And we also have bylaws added and published for the Gore Road War X. Any other additions, the clerk?
Through you, Mayor Brown. We did have just the correspondence, but I believe you mentioned it, and I think that's, nothing's been added since.
And then in Canada, we have a potential addition, a closed session item 19.3, update, proposed property acquisition.
That would be if a member of council would like to add that to the agenda today?
I'm happy to add that. We also have 14.1 correspondence from the VIA.
I haven't received anything about that.
Okay, well, we can, that's item 14.1, right, on the agenda? Okay, so are there any other additions for the agenda? So we have a motion moved by councillor Keenan, second by councillor Brar, to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, motion carries. That includes the addition of the closed session item. Okay, we have the following council minutes before us today. Minute City Council Special Meeting, January 13th, 14th, 16th, and 20th, 2025. Minute City Council Regular Meeting, January 22nd. Do any members have any questions or comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, I have a motion moved by councillor Power, second by councillor Fertini, to approve the minutes as published and circulated. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our consent motion, and I will read the items out that will be held for debate. 8.1, Government Relations Matters. 10.51, Staff Report, Request to Begin Procurement, Design and Supply Installation of Park Shade Shelters. 10.52, Staff Report, Request to Begin Procurement, Design and Supply and Construction of Park Amenities for Shinkusie Sandalwood and Creditview. 10.61, Staff Report, Request to Begin Procurement, Decorative Street Light Rebuild in the Toronto Gore Rural Estate Area. 10.62, Staff Report to Begin Procurement for the 2025 Recreation Trail Repairs. 10.63, Staff Report, Request to Begin Procurement for Public Works Repair Eastside. 12.1, Minute City Council, January 29th. 14.1, Correspondence from LaRousse, McConner. Hold, 14.1 is held.
Holding that piece of correspondence, but there might be in camera to discuss correspondence as well.
Okay.
About regarding identifiable individual, okay?
Okay. 14.2, Correspondence, Regional Council Maderos. 15.1, Notice to Motion to Accept COR 2020 and ISO 45001 Valid Standards of Compliance with Occupational Health and Safety. 15.2, Notice of Motion, Potential Partnerships with Teep Hutchinson and Feasibility of Urban Sports Park. 15.3, Notice of Motion, Facility Rental Fee Waiver for the Annual Celebrity Men Who Cook in Support of United Achievers Club. 16.1, Refer to Matters List. 19.1, Closed Session Minutes. 19.2, Closed Report, New License Agreement. Okay, I have, the clerk will summarize?
19.3, Closed Session.
Okay, and is there a motion in that?
Okay.
I'm happy to add that to consent if members of council had the time to read it. Yeah, there. Okay, so the clerk will summarize items?
Through you, Mayor Brown. The following items are included on the consent motion. 8.1, Government Relations Matters. 10.5.1, Report, Request to Begin Procurement for the Design, Supply, and Installation of Park Shade Shelters. 10.5.2, Staff Report, Request to Begin Procurement, Design, Supply, and Construction of Park Amenities. 10.6.1, Staff Report, Request to Begin Procurement, Decorative Street Light Rebuild in Toronto Gore Rural Estate Area. 10.6.2, Request to Begin Procurement for 2025 Recreation Trail Repairs. 10.6.3, Request to Begin Procurement for Public Works Repairs. 12.1, Minutes of Committee of Council. 14.1, Correspondence, oh, I'm sorry, 14.1 was held. 14.2, Correspondence from Regional Council Maderos regarding a notice of leave of absence. 15.1, Notice of Motion to Accept COR 2020. 15.2, Notice of Motion, Potential Partnership with Teepa Hutchinson. 15.3, Notice of Motion, Facility Rental Fee Waiver for Annual Celebrity Men Who Cook Event. 16.1, Refer to Matters List. 19.1, Closed Session Minutes. 19.2, Closed Report, New License Agreement. And 19.3, Closed Report, Proposed Land Acquisition. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion moved by councillor Brar, second by councillor Vicente, to approve the consent motion. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our proclamations. We have four proclamations today, but before I do, I just wanted to do a quick shout-out. We had the State of the City yesterday. We launched a video, but everything being made in, life is made in Brampton, and I want to thank Vince and Jeff Cowie who did produce that video. So if they're here somewhere or watching this, a great job, we've had a lot of great feedback on the video. And the Brampton Board of Trade, of course, hosted that event, and they're here, Jay Paul, so great event yesterday. Okay, to our proclamations. The first proclamation is National 211 Day, and I know our deputy mayor was hoping to do that proclamation. It's an issue that he has supported.
Oh, I think councillor Brar is on the board. You want, I think.
Oh, so councillor Brar?
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. I want to request if we can have the Black History Month proclamation first. We do have students from a school here today, and I think it would be nice if they can get back to school after that, so if I can request that proclamation can go first.
Okay, well, we have councillor Brar who's requested this proclamation and also has a delegation, so I'm going to give councillor Brar the honor to read out the Black History Month proclamation instead of all.
Thank you. Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Black History Month, whereas Black History Month in Canada is a rich and enduring testament to resilience, brilliance, and cultural contributions of Black communities across the nation and specifically in Brampton. The plan, the Pan-African flag symbolizing the unity, liberation, pride of Black people worldwide stands as a beacon of hope, strength, solidarity for those of African descent. Black Canadians have played a pivotal role in shaping the social, cultural, economic, and political landscape of this country from the earliest days of the settlement through the ongoing fight for equality and justice. It is essential to honor, honor the trailblazers, educators, artists, entrepreneurs, community builders, and the unsung heroes whose work and sacrifices continue to add, advance the collective progress of the Black communities. The celebration of the Black History Month is not confined to a single month, but is a year-round acknowledgement of the contribution, struggles, and achievements of the Black people in Canada and beyond. During this month, we commit to amplifying the stories, achievements, and voices of the Black Canadians in all facets of society while recognizing their ongoing contributions to education, culture, business, science, sports, and social justice. In the spirit of unity, remembrance, we honor the sacrifices of those who came before us and we commit ourselves to fostering inclusion and empowerment for the Black communities in Brampton, Canada, and around the world. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim February 2025 as Black History Month in the city of Brampton. Thank you.
Okay, well, and I believe we have a response from the students at Notre Dame. The microphone is yours.
Okay, good morning, Mayor Brown, councillor, and esteemed guest. I'm Soraya, and we are students from Notre Dame Secondary School in Brampton, and we are honored to be here today to open the Black History Month Celebration at City Hall. This month serves as a time to reflect on the rich history, culture, and contribution of Black Canadians and the Black global community. Each of us will share a personal reflection on what Black history means to us, emphasizing its importance in fostering understanding, unity, and progress within our community. Black History Month isn't just about my ancestors' history, but our future. Highlighting our past greatness can fuel the newer generations so we can be even greater, giving a voice to our erased history that is slowly coming back to life.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Emanuela, and Black History Month to me is more than just a time of remembrance. It is a celebration of resilience, excellence, and the undeniable impact of Black individuals throughout history. It is about honoring the past while inspiring the future, recognizing the struggles and triumphs that have shaped who we are today. It is a call to action to uplift, educate, and unite, ensuring the legacy of Black voices, creativity, and contributions continue to thrive.
Good morning, my name is Tafar Harrison, and to me, Black history means resilience, strength, and progress. It reflects the struggles and achievements of those who came before us and paved the way for future generations. As a Black male in society, it connects me to my heritage and inspires me to embrace my identity. Honoring this legacy means striving for greatness, breaking barriers, and uplifting others to help shape a better future.
Good morning, my name is Daniel Williamson. What Black history means to me is understanding Black history, which helps me appreciate the challenges faced and overcome by our community. Also highlighting the importance of Black History Month in our past injustices and celebrating the strength of the Black community. It serves as a reminder of the continuous fight for justice, equality, and inspires me to positively contribute to our society.
Hello, my name is Avante, and today I stand before you to share what Black history means to me. It is more than a month on the calendar, more than the names in a textbook, more than the echoes of the past. Black history is a story of resilience, brilliance, and transformation. It is the foundation upon which so many, which so much of our world stands today. For me, Black history is about legacy, the generations before us who fought, dreamed, and sacrificed so that we could stand where we are today. Black history is about innovation, excellence. It reminds me that Black people have shaped every field, science, literature, music, politics, sports, and beyond.
Good morning, city of Brampton. My name is Isabella Williams. To me, Black History Month represents opportunity and awareness, a time to honor struggles, victories, and cultural impacts of our Black community. Growing up hearing my mom and dad's stories about their upbringing taught me the importance of resilience and the sacrifices that they paved the way for us today. This month is a reminder of powerful impacts left by our Black leaders, like Viola Desmond, who fought tirelessly against racial discrimination in Canada, and Martin Luther King, whose dreams of justice and unity inspires us to keep striving for progress. Black History Month isn't just about reflection, it's about asking ourselves, what can we do as a community to stand taller and build a better future? It's a call to honor our ancestors' legacy by continuing their fight for equality, unity, and progress for generations to come.
Good morning, Mayor Brown. Councillors, invited guests. My name is Akino, and I'm a great student from Notre Dame Catholic Secondary School. I'd like to discuss what Black history means to me. Black history is an opportunity to educate both the world and those around us about our rich history. In addition to all being Black, we have diverse ethnic backgrounds, and there's so much we can learn from one another. Black history is a time for the community to unite, making sure our Black youth and families take part in events and programs that will benefit our futures while providing access to resources that can lead to success. Access to important information about essential resources is vital for our Black communities. As many, as many families are unaware of the resources available to them, all parents and students should have easy access to resources which can be available through workplace, education, and education facilities. Resources can be promoted through schools or recreation facilities, along with regular workshops and programs in education, health, and financial literacy and career development for both students and parents. Please encourage Black youth to get involved with local organizations and community groups and become leaders to create positive influence on peers and build brighter futures.
To further enhance the impact of Black History Month, we propose the following initiatives for City Hall and Brampton at large. One, City Hall Engagement. Departments are encouraged to contribute by submitting a photo or creating a display that represents Black history or culture. These contributions can be shared online, showcasing the city's collective support and highlighting what Black History Month means to each department. Two, Support for Black Businesses. We invite our area councillors, Najri Karbrar and Michael Pichelli, to visit Black owned businesses in their wards promoting their contributions and encouraging residents to support them. Similarly, we encourage all other councils, councillors, to do the same in their respective wards showcasing the vibrancy and diversity of Brampton's Black business community. And three, Black History Celebrations at Council Meetings. Play the Black History National Anthem during council meetings on February 12th and 26th. Also, to incorporate the reading of the African land acknowledgement on these dates to honor the roots and resilience of the African diaspora.
We believe these actions will not only celebrate Black History Month, but also inspire meaningful change and foster inclusivity across Brampton. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to share our reflections and vision. Together, let us build a community that continuously honors and celebrates diversity in all its forms. We look forward to your support and collaboration in making these ideas a reality.
Great, well, thank you so much for joining us here today, yeah. And we have an incredible array of Black History Months that are occurring. And we have an incredible array of Black History Months that are occurring in the city that will make sure we share with students across the city that want to participate. We had the kickoff on Sunday night with about eight hundred, seven hundred people in the, in the Rose Theatre. It was pretty exceptional. But we do have this proclamation and I'm looking to Candace, we present the proclamation now? Maybe councillor Brar, do you want to present it to the, yeah? Councillor Brar will speak in response and then present the proclamation to the students.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you so much to Danielle, Isabella, Avante, Tefari, Emanuela, Soraya, Akina and our principal learning for us. It's so meaningful to have you here and I know this was not easy. It's probably the first time you've came here and you presented in front of the mayor and council. So thank you, a huge pat on the back for you guys, so thank you again. And just very impressed by our principal leading the way, especially in our school and making sure that we embrace diversity. So just want to recognize the Notre Dame Secondary School for organizing this meaningful initiatives that foster unity within our community. And we truly do appreciate the work you're doing to support all of our youth. It's really incredible to see the youth-driven projects happening throughout the city and how they're being integrated into our council's efforts. And we are very, very proud of you for each, each and every one of you for stepping up to break down these barriers, educating others and making sure that we talk about Black History Month and talk about incorporating in businesses and making sure that we support our youth. So again, a big, big thank you, but also a big shout out to Candace. She's right here, just want to say thank you so much. Without you, I know this wouldn't have been possible, connecting the schools with our city council. And a huge shout out to Dominique, she is also here in the room. She's also, there she is. Thank you so much for being part of this. I would request for a picture and we do have certificates for all those students here today. Thank you.
Okay, great, we'll present this proclamation. Members of council, join me, I will present the proclamation. A motion to receive the delegation move by councillor Brar, seconded by councillor Keenan. All those in favor, motion carries. This takes us to our next delegation, which is, sorry? Oh, announcements, are there any announcements? Okay. Okay, on my list I have National Two One One Day first. Okay. Okay.
Whereas National.
Sorry, I'm just going to read out the, in my mic up, yeah.
Okay, whereas National Two One One Day every year on February 11th, United Ways and Two One Ones across Canada celebrate National Two One One Day, a public awareness initiative for the award-winning Two One One service that helps guide individuals and families through the complex network of human services by phone, online, text, chat and email. Whereas Two One One provides residents of Brampton with information and referrals to the complete range of government, health, community and social services in their communities. Two One One is a free and confidential service available 24/7 in 200 plus languages by phone. Service is also available online at twooneoncentral.ca and via text, chat and email. Whereas Two One One is funded and supported by the United Way Greater Toronto. Residents of Brampton can contact Two One One for information and referrals to health services, mental health supports, income support and financial assistance, food banks, meal programs and grocery delivery, housing help and emergency shelter, support services for seniors and persons with disabilities and more. Two One One recognizes the diverse needs of the residents of Brampton and provides specialized support for individuals, families, youth, seniors, persons with disabilities, indigenous, black, LGBTQ, 2S+ and newcomer communities. Two One One, whereas Two One One strengthens our human services system and helps residents of Brampton get the help they need when they need it, making their pathway to care a guided and trusted one. Therefore, I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby proclaim February 11th, 2025 as the National Two One One Day in the city of Brampton. Thank you.
I don't believe there's anyone here, but the proclamation is now part of the City Minutes. Our next proclamation, and they've got a busy day here today. We just spent the morning with them. We have our faith leaders meeting here at City Hall and I think it's beautiful that we have faith leaders that come together and meet and discuss and collaborate. And thank you councillors Santos, Brar and Keenan, who joined me for the kickoff this morning of this faith leaders discussion today at City Hall. But we have a proclamation we want to present to the faith leaders and I'll read that out. In 2010, the United Nations General Assembly passed a resolution to designate the first week of February as World Interfaith Harmony Week in a call for peace, tolerance and mutual understanding between people of all religions, convictions and beliefs. World Interfaith Harmony Week calls upon the groups to recognize common values and cooperatively enhance interfaith harmony and inner religious dialogue. The Interfaith Council appeals a grassroots group of faith leaders and community members who share ideas, unite to bridge, build and work to advance social issues since the 1980s. Over 160 Brampton faith leaders represent faith communities who serve to provide spiritual guidance and leadership in the community, thus providing an essential service to the wellbeing of the community. Faith prayer gatherings will be held in Peel to recognize the auspicious week. We hope these activities will foster a culture of peace, non-violence and eliminate all forms of intolerance and discrimination based on religion, beliefs or practices. All residents are invited to join in Observing World Interfaith Harmony Week. And that is from February 1st to 7th as declared here in the city of Brampton. And I see so many faith leaders with such incredible respect in our community here today. Is there a representative who'd like to respond to the proclamation? Then we can present the proclamation to all those in attendance.
Good morning, thank you for this proclamation. My name, excuse me, is Reverend Joanne Hedges and I'm here representing the Interfaith Council of Peel, which includes, of course, this great city of Brampton. Wonderful that this city acknowledges and respects diverse expressions of faith and also recognizes and respects the great contribution they make to the wellbeing of this city. Outside of Brampton, sometimes people say that sort of the world comes home here. That in this city, which is growing in so many ways, there are folk and expressions of culture and faith from literally all corners of the world. So thank you for this important proclamation today. Thank you for continuing to respect and lift up the great contributions that our faith leaders in the city of Brampton make to creating a safe, healthy and connected city of Brampton. And I hope that the whole city can celebrate and maybe come over and have a listen, if you have time, to what our faith leaders in the city have to say today.
And thank you to Rasmeen and Erz, who've been working on the program today. I'm going to ask members of council to join me as we present this proclamation officially to the faith leaders here in attendance today. Okay, thank you. I know the faith leaders have to get back to their conference they're having today. So we wish you well in that meeting. Our next proclamation is pretty special and we have some dignitaries here today from the Ossler Health family. And I want to read this proclamation out and I believe Dr. Martino, Ken Mahew and Pardeep Gill may be, may have a response formally on behalf of the hospital. But we just want to celebrate Peel Memorial's 100th anniversary. On February 2nd, Peel Memorial was established with the dedication of a group of community-minded women and veterans whose collective vision and perseverance resulted in the hospital putting its doors for the first time in the years following the Great War. In 2025, the William Ossler Health System is proudly recognizing Peel Memorial's legacy of exemplary care and fostering the health and wellbeing of our community for 100 years. Ossler is a leading hospital system serving more than 1.3 million people and is looking ahead at a transformative future, including the building of Brampton Second Hospital, Peel Memorial Hospital, to bring expanded healthcare services to one of the largest, most culturally diverse and fastest-growing cities in Ontario. Ossler's year-long celebration, Peel Memorial 100, proud past, bold future, will honor the generations of staff, physicians, volunteers, partners and community members whose commitment shaped Peel Memorial's remarkable history and will continue to inspire the next chapter. Ossler invites the community to join in commemorating Peel Memorial's 100-year history as we look forward to the excitement to build the new Peel Memorial Hospital. I, Mayor Patrick Brown, on behalf of Brampton City Council, do hereby recognize the 100th anniversary of Peel Memorial in the city of Brampton. And before you come up, Dr. Martino, I just want to say, it's an understatement to say that we're not excited about this year. And there's something special, serendipitous about the fact that here we are with the hospital groundbreaking scheduled for March 28th at 10:00 a.m. on the year of our 100th anniversary. And you can have everything in a community, but if you don't have your healthcare, it's all for naught. And looking at the new Stats Canada numbers, where we've surpassed Mississauga in size, the fastest-growing community in the country. You do a ton of extraordinary work with less hands, with less infrastructure. The one certainty in life is that we're all going to need healthcare. And I've learned from Ken Mahew that the vast, vast majority, 90% of your healthcare is, is, is going to be at your local hospital. And I touched wood, I haven't had a medical issue, but I've been into the hospital. I had my two kids and the dedication of the healthcare practitioners was incredible. The people that work there are just special, incredible people. We have one of them here in councillor Brar, who we, we stole from you to be around the council table. But I think her dedication and love for helping others is typical of what we see in the physicians and healthcare workers in this very special Ossler family. There's never been a year as significant as this one, as we try to get these projects off the ground. And you know, this, this council will do whatever we can to make sure we have the funds and the capacity, the permitting, whatever is required to see this dream realized. For 100 years, this city has been laying bricks for this dream and it's an honor to have you here today as we celebrate this 100th anniversary. So Dr. Martino, I assume you're first up of the, of the tandem?
It's actually my boss.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I begin, may I politely ask if we can have slightly more than five minutes? Thank you very much, thank you very much. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, council. Thank you very much for giving us a few minutes here to say a few words. Thank you for giving us a platform to recognize Peel Memorial's 100-year anniversary and thank you for always giving us a platform to champion healthcare in Brampton. My name is Pardeep Singh Gill and I'm the Chair of the Board and Treasurer of William, William Ossler Health System. I don't go by Frank's boss normally, but I also have with me Frank, who's our CEO and Ken, who's the CEO and President of our foundation and Manny Satija, who also is a, is a board member and members of our team. So I'm actually a resident of Brampton, a long-time resident of Brampton over 20 years and my family's been privileged enough to receive great care at Ossler. So like you, I understand the importance of having strong healthcare, local healthcare. I've also been a longstanding member of the board of Ossler and I've, I've seen the great work that Dr. Martino and his team do. They have transformative plans regarding hospital infrastructure, new medical technologies and healthcare research and innovation. All that happens here in our wonderful city of Brampton. Just to echo or comment on a little bit of the comments that the mayor made. I'm, I'm an accountant by, by profession and being on the inside of the hospital, I truly see how hard this team works to stretch every single dollar that, that we get funded. And I want to thank this council for championing the cause of healthcare in Brampton, every opportunity that you get and to the work that you've done to increase the funding that this hospital gets. I'm thrilled that 2025 represents the opportunity for us to celebrate 100 years of Peel Memorial, but also represents the year that we will be starting construction on another hospital in Brampton. And that wouldn't happen without you and as the mayor mentioned, the construction will begin March 28th at 10:00 a.m. So on February 2nd, 1925, the original Peel Memorial opened with, just to put in context, six beds and a nursery for three, three babies. And today, we'll be building another building on those same grounds. As we celebrate this anniversary, while we look ahead to building the new Peel Memorial Hospital, it's a reminder that it truly takes a community to come together to build a hospital. So Mayor Brown and council, truly from the bottom of my heart, as a resident, as a resident and as a member of Ossler, I want to thank you for your steadfast partnership with our organization, for always coming to the table when we call you, for always answering the phone when we call. Six years ago, I recall, Mayor came into the hospital and Mayor, you asked us to be bold. And that gave us the courage to be bold and ask for more. And that, that one of the things we were bold enough to ask for is your partnership, council. And in my years of being involved in the political and healthcare landscape in, in Ontario and Brampton, I've never seen a council so willing to work with any other level of government, to work with our organization, to ensure that we can do whatever we can to get the best healthcare here in Brampton. So I will hand it over to Dr. Martino, but I want to take a moment maybe just to recognize Dr. Martino's almost 35 years of service that he's given as a physician and a health system leader to Brampton. Dr. Martino could have went to any other city at any other time, but he's dedicated his time to Brampton. We thank you for that, Dr. Martino. I also want to recognize Ken Mahew's efforts in contributing to healthcare in the Peel region, his astronomical contributions to putting healthcare in Brampton on the map. Ken never rests, including on his birthday two days ago, he was working for the hospital. So congratulations, Ken. I will now pass it over to Dr. Martino, thank you very much.
Thank you, Pardeep. Good morning, Mayor Brown and members of city council. It's great to see you all again. I have the honor of serving as president and CEO of William Ossler Health System, one of Canada's largest hospitals and one of Canada's largest cities. As a physician, I worked in the emergency department in obstetrics at Peel Memorial. I now and until just recently also worked at the Urgent Care Center, that facility that we created with your help. My, my daughter was born at Peel Memorial. My daughter was born at Peel Memorial, and both my children fractured their wrists. They were both five years old when they did it, and they got care at Peel Memorial. I extend deep gratitude to you, Mayor Brown and council, for recognizing Peel Memorial's 100th anniversary along with us, a truly proud and remarkable milestone for our community. I came to delegate at council about 15 years ago, and as I walked up the staircase from the parking garage, I saw a quote that really, truly exemplifies the commitment of leadership in this community with regards to healthcare. And it is a quote from Mahapad Gandhi that I've reflected on for many years. And it is wealth that is real health and not pieces of gold and silver. And you personify that. So thank you. The vision and commitment of Peel Memorial's original founders, who opened the doors on a cold February, very much like today, to inspire us to look ahead to the new Peel Memorial Hospital, where we'll have a second emergency room and new enhanced services to serve this community into the next century. As our community marks this centenary, we will invite residents and families to share their stories, whether it was an exceptional care experience, physician or staff that truly made a difference, or a Peel Memorial moment. And I'm going to share one with you that brought your family or community together. We'd love to hear about it. We will be posting these on our website, and we encourage our residents in our community to come forward with those stories. The one I'll be posting was that day about 25 years ago, where I was called out of the emergency department because a baby couldn't wait to go upstairs to deliver by the elevators to the Clarence Wing, and I had the pleasure of delivering that baby right there in there. So while we celebrate Peel Memorial's legacy, Ossler continues to drive new technologies. I want to talk a minute about some of these innovations across our health system. We are one of the first hospitals that uses genomics to get oncology cancer diagnoses really quick for the patient. That's extremely important. We have robotics and precision surgery in our emergency departments. We use predictive analytics, harnessing AI to truly help us with complex diagnosis, and a number of new models of care that other organizations are using and are appreciative of. And now, very shortly, we will be implementing a leading-edge hospital information system, which really will truly renew our digital patient care platform. Very excited about that. Just a few months ago, we launched the Ossler Research Institute for Health Innovation, and that will generate new local and global impacts to patient care, that I can guarantee. And it builds on the legacy of over 500 research projects completed, and there's about 160 in play right now, of which 79 are very important clinical trials. Along with this, Ossler is the primary affiliate of the Toronto Metropolitan University School of Medicine. That means that young Bramptonians will be able to become the physicians of our future, trained by expert clinicians right here in Brampton. And I remember shaking the hand of a young man who was at university in Toronto, and he said, you know, Dr. Martino, it'll be wonderful. I don't have to go to University Avenue to live my dream. Isn't that wonderful? So we hope to do that. And so as we reflect on Peel's centenary, let's continue to work together to meet the ever-changing needs of our fast-growing, diverse, and incredible community. It's a proud past and, yes, a bold future for our community's healthcare. So on behalf of Ossler's health heroes, thank you very much, Mayor Brown and members of council, for your tireless support. And I say that, your tireless support, and for helping us recognize Peel Memorial's 100th anniversary. And now I'll hand things over to my good friend and colleague for some final words. Ken Mayhew.
Thank you very much. Honored to be back again in front of council and Mayor Brown. Tough acts to follow. I have no story of delivering a child at Peel Memorial, so I'll just get sort of that. I would say that I reflect on the comments of the students from Notre Dame. And someone said, building on the contributions of those who came before us. That's what this feels like to me. This is about a historical moment where individuals in the community with busy lives and lots going on, lots of worthy causes that they supported, decided that Brampton needed a hospital. And instead of somebody should do this or something should be done, they think big, and they got it done. The legacy is generations of healthcare. I know many have stories about a tough moment in life where Peel Memorial was there for them, Ossler was there for them, and also lots of happy moments, lots of great moments where we helped increase the service population of Brampton even further. So I have the great role within the foundation, that small detail called raising the funds to make it possible. And as we told the Brampton Board of Trade yesterday collectively, Brampton has a history of stepping up for healthcare, and they will once again. We're deeply honored by the support of council. I'd never, ever take it for granted, be it the Radio-Thon or Hockenay in Brampton or the Endless Giving Gala, lots of people come to us thanks to you, and we're really, really grateful for that. And we're going to need that support because it's a, as Mayor Brown told me so gently yesterday in front of 500 people, it's an enormous campaign. There's lots of work yet to be done. It needs to be done, and it will be done. So I think I would just end there if I could. It's about celebrating our proud past, yes, but it's actually about building a bold future together. We'll continue to do that with heartfelt thanks. And really, it's a historic moment, and there must be 100 people a week at this podium saying such things. I realize that, too. But truly, in the history of Brampton residents, this is something that's been a long time coming, and that will, the beneficiaries will be generations of Bramptonians. So thank you very much.
Well, we have a proclamation that I'm going to ask council to join me and present to the Ossler team. And just to say one last point, Ken, you know, one of the perspectives I have, having served at three levels of government, is the provincial perspective, and that is there is 10 times more requests for healthcare dollars than there is. And the approach at Queen's Park has always been, as long as I can remember, the communities that are ready move ahead. If you're not ready, you don't move ahead. And right now, there's this, the stars are aligned for a med school, a cancer care center, and a second hospital, as long as we're ready. And we understand this is our joint responsibility to be ready, to seize this moment, and we certainly wouldn't want to lose the stars being aligned. So on that note, we want to present this proclamation to you for this exciting moment in our city's history. Okay, we just need a motion to receive the proclamation for Peel Memorial's 100th anniversary. I see Counselor Visante and Counselor Barrar. All those in favor? Motion carries. I know Counselor Barrar, every time we talk about the hospital, it's very personal for you, so. Okay, our next item is 7.1. Are there any delegations for the public notice on bylaw 2016-2023?
I have none online, sir.
Okay. That takes us to, we've already done with the delegation 7.2, and we've received the delegation. Done the delegation in terms of Black History Month, so this takes us all the way to, to the clerk. A lot of this is on consent.
Q, Mayor Brown? We're up to bylaws already, and following that, we do have...
I thought we have 14.1.
Oh, 14.1.
Yeah.
And then bylaws, and we do have open session motions to vote on regarding closed matters.
So 14.1, I believe Counselors Santos, Visante, and Keenan have some commentary here. So Counselor...
I think we're enrolling Segway in camera, I think, on this.
Do we need to go in camera?
Eventually, I think, where we can discuss it. In camera first, and then 14.1, the correspondence from downtown BIA.
Okay. Let's finish up the rest on the agenda, and then we can have a conversation if need, if going in camera is needed. We'll speak to the city solicitor. Okay, this takes us to... Preferred Matters list, are there any questions for the Preferred Matters list? Seeing none. A public question here, are there any public questions? Seeing none. Bylaws, we have a motion moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor Santos to approve bylaws 14, 2025 to 29, 2025. All those in favor? This is moved by Counselor Keenan and Santos. Motion carries. Okay. So maybe we'll just do a quick one-minute consult with the city solicitor to determine the grounds for going in camera on this, if I could.
Just so everybody knows, we'll take a five-minute recess now. Thank you.
That's why we always consult with our city solicitor, just verify that is in, it's a public motion that will be presented, and I believe Counselor Keenan will have the motion put forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so this is to do with the correspondence that we received from BIA regarding a vacancy, a vacancy in the seat. And there was an individual who asked, she was the chair for quite some time. She'd been on the BIA for, since 2018, I believe, and was our chair for the BIA through COVID in 2020, did a fantastic job. Due to personal reasons, she had requested a leave, which in the heat of the moment turned into her resigning. She's recently reached out to me personally and indicated that she would like to come back to the Board to help the businesses in downtown. And in conversations with the city solicitor, we do have the right to appoint a vacancy as council. So what I'm looking to do here today is just to reappoint Kerry to the, back to the BIA Board as a Board Member. So we will, that will be my motion that I will be putting forward. I'll just have to quickly get it drafted.
And just to verify, this was held by Counselor Santos, this is item 14.1. That was my recollection. And so this would be in lieu of number two, Counselor Keenan?
So, so, no, because this definitely is already on the board, and she's currently the chair. This is a vacancy. This is a vacancy that's at the BIA.
So this is a new item, this is item number three.
Does the correspondence does state that there's a vacancy on the board, correct?
Sure, okay.
During the chair, I think the counselor's intent was to replace the second motion, the second bullet there, with the appointment of the member to...
To the board.
Board.
I don't know if that's possible. Right now, just the appointment of the vacancy. So I think we're not dealing with number two now, we're dealing with the appointment of the board. So this is in lieu of number two.
Okay. So we'll cross out all of number two?
Yes.
And add a new?
Yes.
I can email, can you email the name?
Right here, this is filling. Sorry, I was looking for it. I didn't know the spelling of her last name. It's Kerry Percival. Let's wait till this is... And then everything else is, yeah. Number of the board directly downtown, perfect, okay. Moved by Counselor Keenan, seconded by Counselor... Sorry?
Counselor Santos.
I was going to get the second one on the floor. Counselor Santos, okay. Counselor Santos on the floor.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Counselor Keenan, for bringing this forward. Just, I brought up during the budget presentation, when the BIA presented their budget, some concerns that I had. I've been hearing things from some of the members of the BIA, some concerning, I guess, issues related to the governance of the newly-formed executive of the BIA. Some small businesses feeling left out of the conversation or pressured to do things that they don't disagree, that they don't agree with. And a lot of this stuff and complaints have started to come to me, and I'm not even on the board, but come to me as a local downtown counselor, ever since Kerry left the board. And I think that Kerry's strong leadership, and let's be, let's be clear here, Kerry has, operates a very successful martial arts studio in downtown Brampton and has done so for many years. And the work that she's done over the years as a volunteer chair and member of that board has not necessarily benefited her. She's not a restaurant, she's not a retail operator. She, so a lot of the events and things that happen in the downtown don't necessarily benefit her directly because her martial arts student, her martial arts studio and client base come downtown anyway, very specifically for the classes. So when her voice was no longer present at the table, just as like recent as the State of the City event, yesterday, I had a number of small businesses having a lot of concerns and issues related to how the BIA executive and board was operating since Kerry left. So I certainly support Counselor Keenan appointing Kerry Percival back on that board to provide that stability, I think, that's needed, back on that board, especially when we're dealing with so many projects and so many announcements and opportunities in our downtown. The last thing I want to see is any toxicity. And, you know, the appointed chair right now, which hasn't been approved by our council today yet, said in the budget meeting that they would be operating on a team-based approach and collaborative with the city. And based on the feedback I've received... And based on the feedback I've received from businesses, small businesses, that has not been the case over the past few months. So I still have a lot of concerns about the governance of the BIA as it stands right now. And I wholeheartedly support this motion. Thank you, Counselor Keenan, as the executive board member representing right now, council on the board, for all of your hard work and making sure that some of this stuff gets back in order.
Okay, Counsel Vasante.
Thank you very much. Counselor Santos spoke very clearly. And if you need a second or I'm happy to second the motion. I know that when the situation arose where Kerry was looking for a leave of absence, I think some wires are crossed, et cetera, in terms of communication. And it is very much the desire of this council that this vacancy be filled by Kerry Percival going forward. Thank you.
One more item for Counselor Santos.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. One more thing to add, as I've been speaking with Counselor Keenan and some members of the downtown BIA. There are, I have concerns considering the fact that Counselor Paleshi, myself, the mayor, Counselor Keenan sung the praises of Lou Rose Mercator, who also is associated with the city of Brampton by way of an MOU with the downtown BIA. We're, we've been very impressed with the work of Lou Rose to date, who's the executive director of the BIA, who's only started just recently, as well as some of the other staff, like Emma O'Malley, who was also praised during the budget presentation as well. And I'm hearing unfortunate stories of those two staff in particular having issues with the new governance structure and some pressure being put on them and questioning their integrity and credibility in their job. From my perspective and from this council's perspective, they've been doing a fantastic job. And so I would hope that the downtown BIA is listening because certainly in partnership with us, we want to continue to see many of those initiatives that Emma and Lou Rose Mercator have put in place to continue. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor. All those in favor, motion carries unanimously. This takes us to, open session motions, we'll put on the screen. Okay, 19.2, moved by Counselor Power, who's a big basketball fan, seconded by Counselor Santos, who I attended a basketball tournament with. And this is regards to the new lease for the Honey Badgers. All those in favor, motion carries. And we also have open 19.3. This is pretty exciting. The missing pieces for Heritage Theatre block. Now have a full block for what's going to be a pretty phenomenal change to the downtown. Moved by Counselor Vasante, seconded by Counselor Santos, as the ward councillors. And well done to Commissioner Ganesh and to Marlene Callahan, who have been working closely on the Heritage Theatre project. And with the Centre for Innovation, Heritage Theatre, boy, what an exciting time in LRT, what an exciting time in the downtown. I can't wait to see this unfold. The motion on the screen. All those in favor, motion carries unanimously. Okay, those are the public session motions. We have a confirming by law, moved by Counselor Fertini, seconded by Counselor Keenan to confirm the proceedings for our meeting of February 5th. All those in favor, motion carries. Our next item, adjournment. Wednesday, February 26th, is our next meeting at 9:30 a.m. I have a motion moved by Counselor Brar, seconded by Counselor Power, to adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, motion carries. Okay.